That's a way of recording. Yep, I see it. Okay. All right. Thank you all for joining. First item we got is the approval of the meeting minutes from September eighth.
We need a motion to accept notes.
I would, if everyone's good with them, I'll accept the motion.
I'll second it then.
All right, all in favor of the minutes as written from September eighth, twenty twenty. Wayne?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, we got some water and sewer abatements. Five sixty-three hog memorial. Overestimated. So this is an abatement for one oh six forty-three in water, sixty-six oh six in sewer. We got twenty-two whiting ave, red reading entered incorrectly, two seventy-five fifty water, one seventy-one sewer. Twenty-nine park ave reading era, three oh one forty-six for water, one eighty-seven eleven sewer. And sixty-three veal ave overestimated, one thirty-eight sixty-nine water, eighty-six oh nine in sewer. So those are all. Abatements.
It's a motion that we accept the abatement says red.
Seconded.
The motions made seconded, all in favor of Wayne.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. So next couple items on the agenda, some movements for employees. Patrick Smith moving from water sewer to Park and Tree. And Brad Dudas, apologize for not pronouncing that right, moved from highway to water sewer. I guess I don't think we need any type of vote. They're all employees and. If this is just for information purposes, I'm assuming they're all staying at the same pay rate and none of that is changing.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, Kevin, so Patrick Smith. When we had the opening in the pocket tree division requested to move over, that's a lateral move. So we've actually already had him doing that for the last couple of weeks. Brad Dudas had put in a letter of interest to move over into the water sewer division. That was, which that was opening was created by Patrick Smith's move over. We don't, you know, talking to Dennis, we don't have an issue with Brad if that's his wish moving over. But I think at this time, we need to just put a hold on the actual. Actual going through with him moving over until we. Get in place, you know, the two new hires. Brad's knowledge, with Brad's knowledge of the highway division and the workings of the sanding routes, et cetera. I can't really afford to lose a guy when I've already lost two guys in the last, you know, month. That have knowledge of the sanding routes, et cetera. So until we can get a body in there, meaning the new, you know, new hires. I would ask that we just hold off on actually moving him over until we can fill those positions. You know, fill that position with a body. You know, in talking with Dennis, I don't think he has an issue with it. If something were to arise where he needs manpower, of course, we're all PPW, we can move people around. But for now, just with his knowledge of our division, I'd just like to. Put that actual move over on hold until we can put a body in there.
Hey Bruce, what departments are down right now?
Excuse me?
What departments are down right now?
Down people?
Well, we currently, I currently have one out in Pocket Tree. And I am missing. One mechanic, so that's within the highway division. And. If we were to move Brad over now, I would be down another person in the highway division.
The way it stands now, we're holding them for the new buyers, it's down in water and sewer.
Actually Bruce, we'll be down too in highway because Ryan's now moved to the garage.
Oh yeah, that's correct. So Ryan, we moved Ryan into the maintenance division. So if we were to move, and you know, Ryan was in the highway division. So if we move, were to move Brad now, it'd actually be down to, I'd be down to a foreman. And, you know, one equipment operator. Regular driver that is in the highway division. So it'll be tough going into the winter.
Even though Patrick moved over to Pocket Tree, you still down one in Pocket Tree or is that?
Yeah, Jeff Riley's still out.
He is, okay.
Yeah, a few more.
Thank you Bruce.
I think Bruce and Dennis, I mean, it's your.
Yeah.
Prerogative, it's your, you know what I mean? If. You know, it's, if it's just a lateral move, no change in pay and. You know, we can't have departments, you know, we gotta maintain at least some semblance of manpower. So.
I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to waiting until we get a, at least one hiree in for Park Highway.
Yeah, and then the guy's not losing any money, he's still getting paid the same rate. So, you know, I wouldn't want to hurt the guy if we're promoting someone, certainly, you know. I'd want to get him in that new position, but. Versus a lateral move pay wise. I think it makes more sense just keep them where they are till we straighten out some of these, their hires and, you know, fill some of the holes. Right, I was gonna say, so I was just curious if Patrick had some of those sewer certifications? I think that. We're trying to get more people to get.
Yeah. Yeah, Patrick does not.
Patrick, okay.
You know, now that he's gone to Park and Tree, they would be of limited use to him anyways.
Okay, all right. I think like Kevin said, you guys are managing the data, you know, who's doing what and. In crisis, you borrow, right? So. Okay.
So we're good with that plan. We believe, well, Patrick's gonna go over to High, uh, Park and Tree for right now. And, and Brad will, as soon as we get a new hiree in, we'll, we'll leave him where he's at until a new hiree's here and then we'll pull him over. Sound good?
Yep.
Good. Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we got Robert Veloso, class competition.
Completion, all right, so Robert Veloso, he's gonna take both sports. He's taken both courses and, and to wastewater and now he has the. Yeah, he has the qualifications to, to be promoted to wastewater two. Looking through the previous job postings and, you know, in the years. That's basically, he would go to wastewater one if he had five years of experience. He doesn't have that, so he could, you know, but he does have the qualifications that he could, we could, it's up to the board. But then if we could raise him to wastewater two. And he's the only guy that has completed the course lately. And he's taken, done the effort to, you know, to do it and I'd like to, I'd like to move him up if you guys agree.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, I make a motion that we move Robert Veloso up to wastewater two.
Okay, the only thing that I. The only thing I'm not aware of is whether it needs to be posted.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think if we, we, I think something like that may have to be posted. Cause whereas you're moving them up.
Well, does anybody else in the union have those qualifications?
The only other individuals that have those qualifications are already wastewater one.
Right, but I mean, there's nobody else that doesn't have them, correct?
Correct, he's the only one.
So why would it matter?
Uh, other than just a procedural thing, you know, that's the only thing I, I could think of.
But there's nobody else qualified to be moved up to that spot. So.
Right, but haven't we, sorry, haven't we promoted people like guys got operator licenses and things like that? And we haven't, you know, that we promoted them to a different class and I don't think we. Posted for. You know, if it was a new position, we'd post it, but we've had guys get their licenses and then we just, we move them up, I think.
Correct.
I think we just move them up. He did the effort, did the work. I'd say if someone wants to complain, have them come see us.
Yeah, but I mean, if, how can you complain if you don't have the qualifications to do the job?
All right. All right, so we have a motion. If someone wants a second to promote Robert. All right, seconded by Ken, so all in favor of Wayne.
Aye.
Dave, you're on mute. You're on mute, Dave.
Are you, I, I, back up.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Oh, good for him, good for him taking advantage of what we have to offer and then the reimbursements for taking the courses and. You know, and ultimately getting him a little bit more money, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it amounts to ninety-three cents an hour or thirty-seven dollars a week. And he did, he did, he did, and he, and he got good grades on too.
Great, the board appreciates it.
Yes. Thumbs up.
All right, we'll go down the list in order here. Christmas tree fundraiser. So this is what you sent out, Bruce?
Yes, I was approached by Michelle Lamontina. She wants to, Dollars for Scholars is starting this year as far as the fundraising program. Due to COVID, they've been limited on how they can raise funds. So she was looking for a way to help out with that and he came up with this idea. And so I guess she's just looking, she just wanted to make us aware, flash, get the board's blessing to hold us in the, in the town park. We were thinking inside the upper baseball field, due to the fact that it's fenced in and there's. Out, power outlets available. I didn't have any problem with it, she just wanted to, she wanted to run it by every board in town to make sure everybody's okay with it. So that's why I sent out the information and. You know, I think she's just looking for maybe a quick vote on the board to okay the use of the park for that reason.
I think it's a great idea, I make a motion that we let Michelle Lamontina have her Christmas tree fundraiser in the park.
Free, I'll second that.
Bruce, just, I'm all in favor, I answered a couple of questions. So this is just people buy a tree, they put it up, decorate it. And then we'll assist them in the cleanup or we'll do the cleanup, is that kind of the understanding?
Yeah, I see our. Our decision will be to help. Remove the trees after they've been stripped of all the decorations. Just assist in, not so much setting up the trees because the people who do the trees will be doing that. Just, you know, give her the guidance of whether she can get power. She's already talked to Peter Plaza as far as any CP issues, how we'll do that. He's the electrical inspector in town, so. Yeah, our help will be limited, but, you know, that's, that's pretty much all we'll need to do.
Okay. All right. So this is a motion and seconded to. Allow Dollars for Scholars to run, hopefully run their Christmas tree fundraiser. Wayne?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
I am a yes, hopefully they can. Get the approval and then we can, of other town, of all the other agencies and they can do it, that'd be good. All right, we got frozen meter fee. Joe, it's Dennis?
Uh, yeah, currently our, our pay scale for frozen meter fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. The previous meters that were, you know, that we used to have, and we still do the ones that are installed now. If they freeze and they have a blowout plate on the bottom that we can, you know, take the meter and pull it apart, change, you know, rebuild it and put it back. And we charged them, you know, it was a, it was kind of a for your negligence, you get to pay a hundred and fifty dollars for us to do that. The new meters, they, we, we have no parts to rebuild the, the meter. If we, if a, if a person lets their newer, a new style meter, new master meter freeze and break. The only choice we have is to replace the meter, we have to pull the frozen meter out and replace it with a brand new one. Now, we charge currently anybody that builds a new house or is coming off a well and getting a new meter, three hundred dollars for that meter. So it just doesn't, if we're gonna be replacing a meter that we don't no longer have the ability to rebuild. We, I feel that it should be the same, it should be the same three hundred dollars for, if you, if you let it freeze. As, as it would be for a new homeowner or somebody coming off of a well.
I would agree, do we want to make it simpler and just do it as cost of the meter? You know, the meter's a three hundred now, but they could be three fifty.
Right.
Next year.
Right.
You know, if we want to make a, make a change to the, the current. Rules. You know, if a meter freezes, you gotta replace it, so the cost to replace that meter. The meter and the time associated. You know. Should be at the expense of the. The homeowner. That would be my only recommendation, let's keep it simple.
Keep them all, new meter and frozen meter at the same price.
Well, yeah, I think just replacement of any meter found to be damaged by the homeowner, whether it's frozen or. What else could happen, drop something on it or they just break it.
That has happened too.
You know.
The current cost of the new meter is down the road, would it be five years from now and goes up to five hundred, that's what they charge?
Right. Yeah.
I understand.
All right, so someone wants to make. A motion that we could update that fee schedule.
Make a motion for the frozen meter fee or to replace a meter that the homeowner damages for the current cost of a new meter.
Seconded.
We have a motion second, all in favor, Wayne?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I'm a yes. Okay. It was easy, inspection fees.
Okay, um, as far as that, when, when we, when we have, this is something that hasn't ran across too much. So when a, a new contractor or homeowner or whatever has a house and they're gonna demolish it. And then build a new house, we charge, you know, we have an inspection fee for the disconnecting the existing service. And then, and demolishing the house. And in some cases, that's all that happens, they demolish the house because it's, you know, such, such as Commercial Street that was on the fire. You know, had a fire, they just demolished the house and, and we, we inspected the, the. Water lines properly disconnected and then that's the end of it. In other cases, they demolish the house and then they build a new one. And. They would, you know, install, they would, the, the work that would be done on the water service would be longer, it would be. So the initial demolition and then we might go back and then inspect the where the new water main was made. A water service was installed. In my mind, it, you know, I think it would, once they've paid an inspection fee, such as like the plumbing inspector when they, when they pay for the buildings. It doesn't matter how many times you go back, it's the same inspection fees. And currently we have a fee for demolition and then we have a fee for, for new, new service. And I just, you know, it gets, I believe it should, once you get to pay for the, you know, cause you're already getting the fifth and four, eight and five for the. Connection of a new house, once they pay, now an individual pays the inspection fee, that inspection should, that fee should carry you to the completion of the project.
Isn't there a fee too Dennis, to turn off and turn on as well?
That's, that's true and, and, and they, that's included in, you know, that's another fee that's included in the fifty-four eighty-five. You know, for new construction, you know, but when you, when we would go. A lot that would be, a house was being demolished and we would turn off the water, you know, that would, we would turn, we would get that fee. Okay, they, and I just don't see why we should double charge them when we, when we go back and when the new house is there.
That fee though for. Putting in a new meter or taking out the old meter, whatever, is that, that's included in with the turn off, turn on?
Uh, not just the, the, the turn on, turn off, okay, is, is. Not included, is not part of the inspection fee, the inspection fee is a separate fee altogether.
Okay.
So in other words, if we, if we get an inspection fee for, for a new house. Somebody divide, you know, subdivides a large piece of property and then we go back and we start doing inspections for, for water connections. We, that inspection, that inspection fee covers every time we go back and inspect. So if we go back and we, and we inspect where they've installed the curb stuff, you know, and then we go back and install when they connected the service. And then we go back and inspect after they, you know, finish the inside and they're ready for a meter. That one fee covers multiple visits.
Can I ask how you came up with the figure of fifty-four eighty-five?
That's when you, when they, the entire, so that would be connection to sewer, connection to water, the inspection, the turn on, turn off. And the installation of the meter and the cost of the meter.
It sounds like that would be a little more than fifty-four dollars, you're covering the.
No, fifty-four eighty-five, and that's for the individual house lot, okay?
Okay.
And that doesn't count, that doesn't count if they, you know, if they install a new, a new water main, that, that's fifty thousand by itself. And the same thing, connection to, you know, installing a, a new sewer, extending a sewer pipe, you know, sewer main is two thousand. I'm sorry. Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand.
The fifty-four eighty-five yields?
Your house?
Or is it just fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, that's what's confusing me?
No, five thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you. I was thinking you were saying fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents right along, my apologies.
All right, so the point, my contention is that once they pay the inspection, pay an inspection fee for a project. Okay, that we should, you know, that, that inspection should carry us through, through the, the completion of the project. And just the inspection fee, not the rest of the fees still stay the same.
Right, okay.
I guess as long as it's clear it's the same project. You know what I mean, if it, hey, would, you know, we're, we're gonna demo the house, but we're not sure what we're doing, this, that and, you know. If it's a reasonable timeframe that they're gonna come back.
With the time cable.
You're right.
Exactly.
I think it makes sense, if not, then you rent a, well, did he pay or not pay or is it covered, isn't it covered?
Right, I would agree with you, I would agree with you, they, it has to be a continuous rolling thing. You know, it has to, you know, they can't just, you know, demo the house and wait two, two years and then expect those fees to apply.
Well, and I think when they, they demo it. They have to tell us, hey, we're demoing it and we're gonna, we're gonna build a new one within the next year, we're starting, we're gonna go right into the construction. If it's any question, when they start again, it's, it's another fee, cause we, we can't keep track of that. Nor should we.
Right.
So I think that should be spelled out in their. In their project, what is their project, is it demo or is it demo and rebuild? And if it just says demo, then it's a fee, they come back later, then there's another fee.
I agree.
So.
I think if it's a demo, I, if it's a demo and rebuild, the one, and this is just for the hundred dollar inspection fee. But once you start, now I believe it should continue, that, that should cover you to the completion of your project.
I'd agree. Dennis, I think this is not this one, but do we have a comprehensive list of all the fees?
We do.
Like a fee scheduling, yeah. Which probably posted was gonna be my only comment, I don't know, we do, I haven't seen it before, I don't recall anyway. But like on the website, it shouldn't be a surprise to people and certainly when you need to raise it for whatever reason or. You know, I, yeah, I think when we can help out and consolidate obviously, but. Yeah, I was just thinking what Kevin was thinking, let's say this gets stretched out or they, then they change their plans and go to, I don't know, some other type of building. And, yeah, it could get lost. So maybe whatever, within a year, whatever time limit you think makes sense.
I think it's, I, I mean, when, when they come in to say, hey, we're demoing this house, if, if they're just saying we're demoing it, then they pay a fee. If they come back four months later and say, hey, we decided to build the house, then it's another fee. They, they have to tell us upfront, they gotta tell us.
I would agree, but if they come in and they say we're gonna demo and then rebuild.
Yeah, it's the same project, same, yeah, I'd say that's one fee. Cause it's the same project.
That's what I'm, yeah, yeah, currently it's, it's a double hit on. Out of the fee, you know, you know, or, you know. And this says, it's not, it's not like this is happening a lot, it's only, it's only starting to happen a couple of places now. Actually, the only point, you know, it's one Court Street and the Commercial Street, you know, they're, you know, that, we, you know, we wanna see the, the, when they disconnect the service. Okay, and charging, and that's when we want them to pay an inspection fee. But then when they connect that service back up, we want to see it again, but I don't see where we should have to hit them again with another inspection fee for that.
Right.
Cause it's the same, in mind, you know, it's the same project.
I agree, it's logical.
It would, it's like the, you wouldn't ask the plumbing inspector, you know, for another fee, I mean, I mean, the plumbing inspector doesn't ask for another inspection fee every time he comes to inspect. Same thing with the electrical inspector. Once you pay for the, the initial, you know, building permit, the fee for that, they come back as many times as you call.
Makes sense.
Until the completion of the project.
Yep.
Those fees Dennis, can you possibly send an email out to all of us with the data attachment of the various fees so that we have it?
Sure.
Yeah. Just in your favor Dennis, I was just gonna point out, but, so when the building department issues permits. What you're talking about, they base it on square footage usually, so you know, whether it's a residential or commercial project. So a big building, you know, forty thousand square feet, they're getting more money for that permit to cover all the. The various inspectors.
Yeah, and we kind of do too, cause you know, the bigger the building, the more units it is and we charge per unit. You know, you know, so there, we already kind of, you know, get them on that anyways. I mean, there's no doubt about it that the, the big hit is when they put a water main in. I mean, we charge fifty thousand dollars just, just for the, for them to do that. And whether that, you know, whether that water main feeds another two, three houses or whether it feeds four, it's the same price. Other than the individual units. And then each individual unit is another fifty-four eighty-five on top of that.
Okay. Then I got another question I hate to ask, but have to, who is?
Okay then I got another question I hate to ask but have to who is uh so in the case where a building burns or whatever demo uh that meter. Do we take it out of commission does it get re inspected uh just go back to the main fact you know what I don't know that you wanna plug it back in right?
Right um well I mean before we were in the new meter program if we were to recover a a good like say census meter that had no problems. We would um record the the readings and and sometimes reinstall it someplace else you know if of course nowadays you know we we're the new meters. You know everything that's not a not a a master meter is something we don't want anyways. But if it's a master meter in a burnt building we will try and and um um recover it and when they rebuild we may we if we can we're gonna reinstall it.
I was just thinking we should check you know should they be retested uh because now they're almost like it's a small computer in there uh you know so especially in the case of a fire where heat may have caused a problem.
Yeah.
That's all it's above my pay grade just just pointing it out.
Right no I. If you saw if you saw obvious damage you know the thing is we can always bench test it to see if it still reads correctly and we can and we can also. Uh hit it with a radio reader to see if it's that part of it still works and if they're in though if you know if that if it works then we can reinstall the meter and and uh and keep using it.
Yeah okay yeah.
You know.
Alright.
So my question is you know are we gonna charge them twice for an inspection you know or just the once once they start a project? And I believe it should once they start them you know we they come in and pay the inspection fee it should be for the duration of their project.
Yeah one fee per per project.
That so is that the fifty four eighty five is that?
No it's the hundred dollars it's a hundred dollar fee. The inspection is a hundred dollar fee we're talking a hundred bucks here.
Oh my gosh.
So that yeah.
Yeah.
It's just you know and we're already getting it for everything else I hate to nickel and dime them when I just on on returns for inspection.
One fee what's that?
Yeah that's what I would suggest that that it's the the one fee for the duration of the project. The one hundred dollar inspection fee gets you back to wherever you wherever you say you're finished.
Well yeah it's.
Dennis can I can I and and Ken asked for the list I'm going through my notes it seems like every the last four or five meetings or. A lot of times in the last year we're changing fee or looking for clarification. I think get us a a list of fees we make it a semi annual annual agenda item and we vote the fees for the year done. And any clarification or confirmation you know like we do with snow plowing you know what I mean we have the list. Whatever whenever Bruce brings to us in the the fall or whatever this is these are our rates these are the rates of the year this is what everybody's gonna pay and that's it. It's recorded it's in the minutes so if you can work on getting the list of fees and I guess I'd ask anybody if they have questions probably you know just reach out to Dennis and. Clarify or confirm or and then we come back to the next meeting maybe the meeting after if we had to if we need additional discussion. We vote on a set water and sewer fee schedule on every fee that we can think of. And then we if we gotta do it semi annual we'll do it semi annual but something that could be done annually we'll do it annually. Because it just just going through my notes we had you know we've had cross connection fees recently that we have changed we had the the um commercial account. You know for coming out for inspections we just changed that a couple meetings ago um and I and I appreciate all the work I mean that you're doing that we're getting these fees updated. That's that's the most important thing but um I I I think but just trying to wrap wrap it all up into one and.
I can do I can send you the current the um list we have the previous fee we're to trying to catch up to make the uh actually increases. Uh whereas this is basically I'm just trying to how to how uh how does it apply? How does this you know this this apply not I'm not asking for an increase on this or.
No no. But I think if we do this on the annual basis we'll we'll be staying current with rates as well you know so things like the water meter. You know we'll stay up to date with that water meter replacement and things so.
Well if the the fact that you changed the water meter to what the meter costs that was a great idea I mean because if you're covering your costs then you know.
So if you go.
Be evaluated daily.
Yeah so if you can get us a complete water water and sewer.
Yeah.
And um why don't we throw it on the agenda for next meeting Amy? If 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 we're all ready and everything looks good we're ready to vote on it we'll vote on it if we need further info we can always table it.
Yeah I mean just to clarify Dennis it's not that I'm opposed or I think anybody is it's like I I won't remember you can tell me the fee what it is tonight and then next meeting or. Six months from now I'm not trying you know so if I don't have a list to kinda check and compare to it's you know I thought you were talking about more money honestly so when I first was hearing that.
No no. I got you know I wanted to know how long it should last and I think it's you know basically once you pay this particular fee it should last for the duration of your project. Now that's all and there's no price increase or anything it's just how it applies.
Right right I think your concept is good that hands with that if that helps I mean that's so but uh be hopeful and see on paper you know.
And whatever we come up with we can post on the website too or whatever I mean makes it simple especially.
We should look at all of them.
Yep.
We should look at all of them and make sure that they align.
So work on getting them out Dennis we can look at them and we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I I have them on paper I guess it's just a matter of I'll I'll scan them and send them.
Yep okay.
But by is this the application of this particular one you know you know like I said I I think you guys are pretty much feel like I do is that. Once once an individual pays the the initial inspection fee it should apply for the duration of his project.
Well I think they those are things we can put in this schedule Dennis we we can put that right in there so there's no you don't have to interpret it. You don't have to we don't have to the person applying for it doesn't have to I mean that that's part of it too part of a fee schedule is okay what do you get? You know what do you what do you get for your fee that you're paying so. So we can. Alright uh next agenda item future town meeting articles.
So um we have um um already the finance committee and um. The um um town accountant they're looking they're trying to do some advanced planning and um I know we got the force main project that we're looking at. Um but um you know if we you know I could I could give them a laundry list of stuff um it's just you know where where you guys wanna go next.
This this is they're asking for a spring town meeting?
Yes for next spring.
Good um I I guess first and foremost and and I I haven't reached out and. I know today was Frank's last day so I probably have to start talking with Lisa um about scheduling a fall town meeting for the sewer. Based based off of our conversation with Zia that if we wanna get funding lined up and SRF funds and things like that we need to have town meeting approval. And if we have to wait till spring this project isn't started until twenty twenty two.
So on the subject of articles of chime in um so it was my intention to present the articles this year at town meeting. Um uh one for a new uh mower and a continuing effort to. Update the mower fleet which some of them still date back to early two thousand three four or something like that so uh. You know getting another new large mower um and I can purchase that I'll try to get that out of cemetery account. Which currently has close to thirty thousand dollars in it the mowers are a little over ten so um. So that was one of my articles another article that I'd like to present this year would be for a shift uh a one time pickup truck we have a two thousand three in our fleet. That has seen better days you know I don't know how many years we're supposed to get out of these trucks but I think it's time to. Replace that before you know it's undrivable um that would be a raised and appropriate request. Uh also a raised and appropriate question would be the effort to continue uh trying to uh weed out the nineteen ninety nines. So I would request another dump truck uh this time it would not be a cabin chassis it would be. Uh a the regular uh truck with a dump body because the remaining sanders we have are sliding. So this would make that truck you know dual purpose we could use it for a dump truck during the summer and during the winter we put the sliding. In there and it's our dedicated standard just for the winter um. Another article that that I think is very very important to present at town meeting is a lift for the mechanic's garage. Um they have portable lifts now so they wouldn't have to be mounted into the floor of the old garage we'd be able to move it over into. A new garage when it gets built um would be the same type of lift I'd wanna get in the new garage anyway so. Um I've been researching those they're about forty five thousand dollars um. And the another article I was looking to present this year would be for an infield grooming machine one of those three wheel machines. Um we are like the machine that we've been using for the last fifteen twenty years was the hand me down from the high school back when they had a shop and uh. It's we can't get pot trucks anymore it has no steering blocks now. Uh we would use this machine to groom the base the three baseball fields that we care for and the pathways the. The uh gravel pathways are running throughout the park uh so I mean we could get a couple of good uses out of it. They're around they're around with attachments around twenty grand or more. And then lastly the article that we wanna present every year uh for the roadwork the hundred thousand dollars for uh various roadwork so.
That's the most important one.
So there's six articles that's kind of a lot but you know the cemetery uh accounts can pay for the mower and I was thinking of uh. You know we could use some of the cemetery money to offset the cost of the one time dump because that's where we we use the one times in the cemeteries anytime we dig a grave. Or we're working in there so um with the board blessing those are the those are the articles that I'd like to move forward for and present to uh the thing com and the town accountant. Uh at least moving forward to see what they say you know.
Hey I I have no issue with. Gi- giving them even more not we know we're not gonna get everything but almost like um you know they were are always hearing hey you know what's your five year ten year plan? And 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 I know a lot of this is the replacement of the nineteen ninety nine trucks you know Dennis you said you have a list a mile long. Well there's there's no harm in sharing that with them saying hey you you know we have these ten different things or whatever they are and yeah we can't do all ten. But here's my list here's my top three and then just start picking away that way no they know too for next year we're gonna be back with maybe the same amount maybe more um.
Well my.
My just one thing just Bruce and 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 Wayne I know you'll you'll wanna or I think and no one no one on the board would not. Support this so we get a hundred thousand dollars for roadway do we wanna set start a separate fifteen thousand dollars just for sidewalk? I I know the hundred grand we use for whatever and we can use it for sidewalk and we can use it for roads and we can use it for but. You you know there's been a lot of issues with not a lot but there's a lot of sidewalks in town probably much more than any other town our size. Um you know we we have sidewalks like you'd have in a city you know what I mean both sides of streets both sides of main streets you typically don't see that I mean. You know especially you know you look at towns around neighboring towns.
I would agree with you but I think it should be twenty five thousand. Should be a hundred thousand dollars for roads and twenty five thousand dollar article for sidewalk repair the sidewalks in town I mean and I see people on social media. And what they say is 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 true I mean people have fallen it's 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 terrible and we just don't have the money so. If we don't ask we're not gonna get it and we need it so I would I would like to see twenty twenty five thousand dollars a year to to redo sidewalks and a hundred thousand dollars for the roads.
I think I think Bruce. Make a second one just for just for sidewalks you know and 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 it you know we we have a lot you know what I mean and and. Twenty five grand doesn't go too far um it's gonna go a lot further by us doing it you know I mean that 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 allows you know. The park the highway department to hopefully we can do a lot with them.
Yeah I mean twenty five thousand dollars us doing the work is it goes a lot lot farther.
Yeah I mean that's fifty grand if you had to pay a contractor.
Right.
Easily.
Right yeah that would be good because I agree.
Yeah I thought I thought Kevin's original suggestion was fifty thousand. So I mean.
I think I said.
And I thought Wayne was dropping them down.
No 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 fifteen one five.
No I I get I mean fifteen twenty five I mean I I think we gotta start somewhere so we can start at twenty five and and if it.
Well that's.
Yeah because.
That sounds good and it will be specifically for sidewalks and you know it obviously would be something that we would have to. Uh you know set aside maybe for a few years anyway. To get enough money built up into that sidewalk specific account to actually do a good length of sidewalk rather than do band-aids you know. But I think it's a good idea and then also it it lets people know that that can't get spent on anything else but for sidewalk and so. People want sidewalk fix there it is we you vote this in we'll start tipping away at them.
Right yeah I think that's important because the perception is that more money taxpayer money's coming our way and it doesn't come to the GTW so. Having specific articles yeah that'll call attention so I agree that's great.
And we yeah and we've done a lot of sidewalks over the last ten fifteen years it's just you know you those get forgotten. When you know you walk down a bad sidewalk you people forget about all the other ones that have been done over the last ten fifteen years there's been quite a bit.
But if we have some dedicated money.
Alright so now how about generators and what else isn't on that list of uh?
It's on Dennis.
It's on Dennis's plate.
Right so everything I propose has to be you know more or less come out of water and sewer and of course the 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 big the big thing that we gotta get done is the sewer force main. And what we have after that I mean um you know I got a I got a uh the I got a truck that's got a hundred sixty five thousand miles on it and it's currently. Uh fourteen years old um we still have the thirty streets in town that are you know the water mains were put on but the services weren't done and the trenches are still still there. Um you know uh we wanna consider that Beaver Street uh main what we're gonna do how we can take advantage of whether you know brockton with that valve tie in. And um um uh the other thing is the one thing I didn't you know mention when we were talking about Auburn Street is that. If we're gonna repave Auburn Street it has a you know a a fairly old PVC main over the majority of it and then there are many sections of it. That still have um asbestos cement and mix mixed in with PVC so there's a section of PVC and then asbestos cement and then it's back to PVC. And then up by the curb it turns back into um uh eight inch plastic and I don't I have I have faith in plastic problem is this this the saddles is the you know they rot out.
They rot out.
Yeah we're gonna do anything as far as you know is uh looking at that or we just wanna pave over and 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 cross our fingers um you know um. And we still have some ongoing projects too now already with the uh you know with the previous articles that we got you know it's. You know, at the, at the two mains pump stations, we've, uh, checked, we've rebuilt, had three of the, the ma- the, the major pumps rebuilt. While four of them have been rebuilt, three of them have been rea- reinstalled. Three sets of motors have been rebuilt and we've reinstalled. We got one, um, one more at Commercial Street to, uh, to finish it and, um, um, to, to it Auburn. And, um, you know, those, those projects are ongoing. We still have, uh, work, uh, uh, proceeding on the, uh, Rowena and Old Coach, uh, changing them over so we can also have the dual feed with the, we, the generator's repaired now, we wanna get the, uh, the, uh, the secondary, uh, ability to use the power. Uh, the, a tow, the tow behind generator with them. Um, we're still doing that, um, and we have the money for a generator for voucher, but we just haven't had the time to, to, to do anything. The next part, the next thing for that is to pour the pad and dig in the, uh, the conduit from one cabinet to the, where the generator is. But it just, you know, it just hasn't been, you know, between that and, and finish the meters. So there's a lot on the plate.
Get cracking.
And, and, and water and sewer only has, uh, so much.
Wasn't there a little patch that you had to do from the pump station out towards Route eighteen, uh, with either the water or sewer too, Dennis, that you were talking? If they do the force main?
Right, if, so if we're gonna do water on, on, um, Auburn Street, I would imagine that we would start where the state left off.
Yeah.
At the intersections.
Well, I, I, I think that, uh, we should discuss as a board, replacing that main at the same time that we do the force main. While the road's dug up and we incorporated into the same bond as the force main. Because those saddles are gonna rot off. It's just a matter of time.
And another thing is, you know, I, it's not, it shouldn't add any cost to us, but we should let Brockton know that if they're gonna replace any of the valves on their twenty-four inch main that is under Auburn Street, that they should do it, they should coordinate with us.
Right.
Yeah.
There's two sets, two sets of valves.
Yeah, uh, just a thought, uh, do we need to talk to N Grid or should we talk to National N Grid about the age of that, um, service? In the road too, while we're there?
I think we could get, yeah.
I'm sorry, gas, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we get a better timeline? If we know this project is happening next year, then it's, you know, notifications, you know.
It's early as possible.
Early spring, hey, that, you know, the road construction's going on, you have a year to get your main in, you know, where you're gonna be.
You gotta be waiting five years.
I don't know why we could, yeah, I don't know why we couldn't just send them a letter now, tell them we're in the planning stages of it, and you need to start thinking about it.
Yeah, we could. We don't wanna run into the same thing we have on eighteen, but we gotta wait another eight months so that the road can settle.
Typically, typically every year I correspond with National Gid Gas regarding any roadwork that we have upcoming for the next year. Just so they know what we're doing and, uh, they can go ahead and, just exactly what we're talking about, go ahead and replace anything they need to replace before we go ahead and repave the road. So, uh, they, they usually reach out early, but, you know, we can add that to the list when we send it to them.
Or are they also, are they the only utility that's in the road? I know most of it's all aerial, but is it just gas, water, and sewer? That's the only thing that's in the grounds?
Um, and Brockton's water.
And Brockton's water. Also, maybe just a letter to Brockton Water and N Grid Gas. Hey, we're in the design phases for a project that's estimated to be June twenty-one to June twenty-two. Which will include full, full-width pavement of the entire length of Auburn Street. If you have any work, now's the time. That makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Can you guys work on getting those letters out? I mean, they can just come.
I mean, I can call Pat Smith, um, as far as Brockton, I just call Pat and, uh, Pat Hill and just tell him.
I think, I think you need to put it in, I think we need to put it in writing and send them a letter. You know, address it to there. Do they have a board of commissioners, or do they have a, they must have some similar type of board or something, you know? Superintendent, water superintendent, or, you know, I don't know how their hierarchy works.
Yeah, it should be in writing.
You know, and the same thing with N Grid. You know, I know we have the local contacts and, you know, the guys you deal with locally, but it should go to them as well as, you know, if there's a regional or, or something like that. Um, that way there's, you know, nobody told us.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem. I have that contact info. I'll send them, I'll, I'll send them an early, uh, early letter, uh, not including any chapter ninety, just basic roadwork that we'll be doing just to give them an earliest heads up as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, best case, we're looking, you know, it's a, like I said, a June twenty-one to June twenty-two construction duration. You know, that's best case, so that's gonna give them eighteen months to plan.
Will do.
And I think if that water main is in that, I don't wanna say bad shape, but in that condition, then maybe we throw that into it.
Well, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of plastic asbestos cement, plastic asbestos cement, so.
Yep.
I mean, we're bound to have a problem with those saddles.
Other thing you gotta throw in there too, Dennis, is the bit, uh, if we're gonna, Brockton's gonna be putting in that T for us. When we get the road open, we wanna do the backup.
Yes.
To water main.
Yep. That's the other thing, is that, you know, beside the fact of, of replacing the main, it should probably increase to at least twelve inches.
The main on Auburn, I, I would agree. That's what we put on the Mastod side, right? All twelve inch?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I believe, yeah.
Yep.
Now, you don't, we don't do ten though.
No.
Okay, well, I, I think, I mean, talking with the, the force main, I think we need to, I know Ziad said he was close on an estimate. We can throw him this little curveball now and. Hey, can you, can you throw in a couple thousand feet of water line and add it to it? I mean, that should be fairly simple, to be honest. I mean, a twelve-inch main in the street, you know, you can, there's not, I mean, it's one, there's not a ton of houses. It's not like we have a house every, you know, hundred feet going that whole length. You got some in the beginning, but then there's a large areas where there's not a lot of services, so, um. Dennis, maybe me, you, and Ziad can, can talk, and we can have them just crunch some quick numbers. You know, again, if we're gonna go to town meeting, we need to have a complete, not complete, but a, a good estimate of costs. And I would agree, another couple million to replace the water line, you know?
Right.
Okay. And, and like I said, I'd, given them more information, the better for a spring town meeting, you know, let them tell you no, but at least say.
All the board members, all the board members are aware of how many breaks we've had on Beaver Street, right? So.
Well, what's Dennis reminded us, uh, me, anyway?
About, about four in the last five years.
Right.
Yeah.
So that needs to be taken care of.
And the other, you know, the other thing is the, is that, that, that Beaver Street main, that six-inch Beaver Street main feeds an eight-inch Dr. Lion main at Vamp Meadow View.
You're not supposed to do that? You're not supposed to feed that eight inch with a six inch? What's wrong with that? Been a while since I took a fluids class, but I don't think that's proper hydrology.
Is there a friction loss there?
Yeah, that's it, uh, going back by the patch.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it appears, uh, Bob has a question. How much water sewer capacity remaining do we have?
Oh, it's, um, yeah. So Bob, to answer your question, um, capacity, we're fine. Um, the, the, when we do the force main, we don't have to make it any larger. Um, because the size we have works with the, the flows, and then also our agreement with, uh, Brockton that we finally just finalized. Um, our flows are in line with that agreement, so, um, luckily, we don't have to increase the size. And contract-wise, we're in good shape as far as what we're allowed to send.
Thank you.
I would agree.
Sorry, I don't wanna pay attention to the chaplains.
I just, uh.
Thanks, Dave.
It popped up.
Aren't you the secretary? Isn't he the secretary?
Yeah, I guess so.
Good job.
All right, um, go down, date the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, there was a question on that. Hey, Bruce? Bruce Martin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're talking about the next meeting, uh, is that something you gotta wait till you talk to the town hall?
I did, uh, have brief conversations with guys on that today at the town hall. So I'm not sure if we can leave it open-ended still, uh, if you have to actually vote, but, um, we would like to hold the next meeting in person, u- utilizing the auditorium at town hall. Um, for the, uh, to be able to interview, uh, potential, um, candidates for the job openings we have. So, and, uh, do it in a socially distant manner. Uh, so I think that's definitely something that we can do. Uh, we may wanna not have that meeting on a Tuesday night due to the fact that the town hall is open late on Tuesday night. So to, uh, limit the amount of exposure to the town hall employees of people coming into the town hall for our meeting, we may wanna hold the meeting that week on the Monday before. I think the Wednesday after is a holiday. Um, so I, I'm not sure if you, do, we need to actually vote when the next meeting is, or can we just call the next meeting when we have better information? But, uh, I, I think we can do in-person meetings and interviews with candidates u- utilizing the auditorium. And, uh, we just let one in at a time, we set, we'll have the auditorium set up in a fashion so everybody's spread out far enough. Uh, we can use, wear masks at the same time. I talked to town hall maintenance who set up the town hall, he said it's certainly doable. On that note, I believe we're having a department head's meeting in the auditorium tomorrow, which would probably have more people at it than our commissioners meeting will have, so definitely something that can be done.
All right, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't think it's anything we gotta set. I mean, as long as we give proper notice, I, I'd say, you know, for everyone's schedule purposes, the, the ninth, or worst case, if we gotta go to the twelfth, that Thursday. You know, I think.
Correct.
We'll, we'll kinda target that if.
I would prefer the twelfth because I already have another meeting on the ninth, that Monday night.
Okay.
And I wanna be there.
Yeah, I think it's important, yeah, rather. Either one works for me, it doesn't.
Yeah, li- likewise for me.
Yeah, same here.
No, wait a minute, it's Monday night football on the ninth. Maybe. It's only the Jets though, it's only the Jets.
They're, they're open, uh, late on Thursdays, I believe, also. I don't know if that's an issue or not, I have to talk to other people at the town hall about that. The first I'll see why it's an issue, the workers are in their offices, will be in the auditorium, any potential, and the inter- the people will be interviewed. We'll only let in one at a time, they can wait in their cars until it's time, they'll wear masks, they'll have the temperature taken downstairs where they have that set up. So I, I, I don't know if the fact that the town hall is open late on those nights is a factor. I'll find that out probably tomorrow.
Is it open late on Tuesdays, Bruce, or is it just they have meetings in there, or, uh, it's only one night a week that they're open late, isn't it?
Tuesday nights.
Oh, it's Tuesday night, okay.
Hey, Bruce, not for nothing, I mean, we could still do it probably Tuesday night. The only reason I say that is you think about when they do their voting. I mean, they got all kinds of people coming and going as well as the workers there.
Right, I, it was just something that I was talking to with, with the town hall maintenance there, and he wasn't sure if that would be an issue or not. And it was something I was gonna discuss tomorrow at the department head's meeting.
All right, let's get, uh, get some additional info and we'll, we'll target a date that week, but.
Do it the tenth, great, if not, hey, the twelfth.
I would, I would agree that we need to, you know, we're hiring employees, we need to see them face-to-face and, you know, a Zoom isn't gonna cut it. All right, so TBD that. All right, um, old business. Mastod project, looks like they're kinda packing up for the winter. We got binder down, which is nice.
Yeah, the roads are good.
Come back in this, we'll come in the back in the spring. They did a nice job, they did a really nice job with the temp markings. Uh, it was appreciative of that.
The lines, yeah.
Um, but they, they really, you know, it's, it's all temporary, it's gonna get paved over, but they put it down like it's permanent, so that was appreciative. You know, and it will hold up during the winter too, which will be good.
Came together, yeah.
I, I don't know if there's any other, I said, they'll be back in the spring, we'll top it, and I think overall, it was a good project. It's nice to have the lights operating.
Did a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, the new traffic lights, yeah.
Uh, complete streets, Bruce, we, do we have any design yet?
Uh, we don't have any finished design, um, and also, uh, the other thing really to report on that is, there was a deadline. Uh, December thirtieth, as far as, uh, thirty-first, as far as, uh, completion. So I did a formal request to, um, move that, move that ahead to summer thirtieth, first of next year. Uh, which, talking to the coordinator, the grant coordinator, it didn't seem to be, that would be an issue, a lot of towns are in the same boat. So, um, you know, we're just moving forward, nothing really further to report at this time.
Okay, yeah, and obviously at this point, we're looking at a spring project. So, we'll get it out and get it bid. Um, force main, so we had, we had the meeting last week, uh, I think it was good information from, uh, Ziad. I think just to follow up to get, get that actual estimate, and then, um, I guess I'll, I'll give at least for a couple days to get into the seat and ask about a fall town meeting. Um, you know, with Ziad's estimate and go to a town meeting to get, uh, funding and how we're gonna pay for it, and it's gonna be loans, but, um, get that process started, cause as we said.
It's wasted.
Yep, you know, we're already nine, ten months away from construction. We can't, we can't wait any longer.
Just, huh, sorry, were you done?
Yeah, yeah, what do you got?
Related question, related note, uh, well, just noticing in the Whitman Express, it seemed they were forming a search committee or hiring a search firm for the, uh, T- town administrator. So I didn't know if that means there's a temporary or a interim position. Um, but actually, more important, my concern is, um, I, I think we were looking for the, uh, what do you call it, appointing of, uh, one of our positions. We have to move that along too, I think, uh, we probably wanna get that on their agenda. I don't know how it works. Do we have to put it in a formal request?
Well, I think there's only one person that, uh, applied for it.
Okay, that, that too, was there an application period?
I think there's only one person that showed interest so far.
Okay, well, good, at least.
Wayne, I believe there's two. Ken Leiler had to send me an email about a friend of his that was interested in the position, as well as, um, Bruce had mentioned another gentleman that's interested in the position as well, so.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware. I know there's one, there was one that, last I heard. The selectmen have to go through their process and let us know, I guess. No, there's supposed to be a joint meeting.
It's a joint meeting between us and the selectmen and it's a joint vote. Yeah, it's a, it's a combined vote between the two boards, so it would be. Up to nine member, up to nine members, nine votes.
When's that supposed to happen? Any idea?
That's what.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know.
I don't know.
There's a lot of changes there, so that's all I'm saying. Yeah, we may have to.
Right.
Yeah.
From what I saw, Lisa Green is the acting interim.
Right.
Town administrator, that I think I saw that on.
Yeah, I did myself.
Selectmen. Zoom.
Yeah, effective tomorrow.
So, and as far as we're concerned, questions, you know, we'll go to Lisa and. Till they um. You know, hire a permanent. That's on my list, I'll uh. Reach out and talk about both those, the fall town meeting and the filling of the, the open position. On the board. I had a couple. Items. Bruce, the trash. And the, the audit that we had there in August and the overbilling. Um, not overbilling, the added cost for the recyclables. Any discussion, you know, we talked last time about that, you know, if we're not behaving, certainly impose penalties, but. If they're gonna keep imposing penalties, they're gonna need to have the backup. That we're still not abiding by the contract, so any discussions with waste management on that or?
So we're gonna have them do an audit at the end of this month. And um. And see how that goes, like, you know, I told uh. My contact, Heather Laurel, that uh we had put out some information out there for the residents. Um. And hopefully they're behaving better, recycle scene looks a little better. Uh, and so we're gonna have them do an audit at the end of this month. And in my opinion, we need an audit pretty much at the end of every month if they're gonna continue charging that fee. Um, that extra fee. So we'll have a, again, we'll have an audit done at the end of this month. If everything's good, then we'll go back to uh the regular billing. And if it's still incorrect, then I'll have to probably. Put some more messages out there to the public and. Um, hopefully they get it and we'll do another audit at the end of November. Because, you know, like we discussed in the other meeting, we, we're not gonna, we're not gonna pay. An extra fee based on an audit that was done two months ago or three months ago, you know, that could have just been a bad month. You know, so we'll, we'll have audits done monthly if we need to.
That's.
Yeah, and I think it's important, you know, that everyone understands. You know, I've seen all the flyers and. All that and the proper recycling, what can and what can't. I've seen the social media and spurred a lot of questions, which is good. You know, because ultimately we want to do it the right way and not have to incur. Additional fees. Okay.
We, we, we can't have. Additional fees without documentation. They just can't impose. Bills to us without documentation. That's a must. So it has to be done every month if that's gonna be the case.
Agreed.
And then the last thing, um, we touched on a little bit, the meeting the other day, we'd got the proposal from environmental partners to do some preliminary. Design and engineering for a new building. I went back through my notes. I know we got fifty thousand at the last town meeting. For a study and I think either Bruce or Dennis, I'm not sure who told me, but how much did we have left? In the other article? From. A couple of years ago when we did the soil investigation? I never wrote it down, I apologize. Anyone remember? If you don't know. I forgot.
I can look it up if you give me one minute.
Alright. But I guess what, I mean, what we have, we know we can cover. Their, their estimated costs, you know, even what we have, what was voted in. Just recently. Um, I don't know if any board members wanted to talk about it or if they had a little more time to review the proposal. I, I wanna keep this moving forward. I think we need to keep it moving forward. I know we're gonna be asking for. A lot of projects and a lot of money over the next whatever, couple of years, but. It, it's, it's all warranted. It's, it's long overdue. And. You know. Next step, if. You know, that would get him a contract based on his, on his estimate, but I just didn't know if anyone else had need.
You need a motion? Sorry, do you want a motion to move forward? Unless any questions, like you said.
I, I don't know if we need that officially. We'll need a motion when we go to, if we actually get a contract. I mean, this is just a. I mean, he gave us a proposal. You know, we have a line item, we have the budget, we have the funds, the funds are approved at town meeting. And just. So I didn't, I didn't want to even let it go another meeting. You know, we got this last week.
Yeah, I think. My question is, when can they start? I think most of us are in the same agreement. I don't want to speak for the other commissioners, but yeah, I think we all agreed this was a priority project and. Yeah. Yeah.
Kevin, I have that figure if you'd like it.
Yeah, what is it, Amy?
It's fifteen thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents.
Alright. So we got a little.
Yeah, that was from article from uh May two thousand sixteen meeting.
Wow, wow. That was for the uh. For the foundation, correct?
Uh, it was for the DPW site evaluation.
Site evaluation, yeah.
Yeah, we did the soil borings.
Soil borings, yeah.
That's right, yes. Sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
Wow. So we get about sixty five grand. I mean, this proposal. Will take up a little less than half of that, so we still have a decent amount. If we wanted to do some additional design or some other. Activities or something comes up, but.
It seems like. It seems like we would want to, based on the proposal. Ask, ask Ziad to send us a contract based on that proposal where we show. The board can sign that and get him moving on that. I will also say that we shared that proposal with the capital improvement committee. And they put that uh on their agenda for their meeting this Thursday night, just. Just to share with them, uh, it was a DBW article, I'm sure, I'm, I'm not sure we need. Any kind of uh permission for them to move forward with our article, but uh there's certainly they have the capital improvement committee, so. They're gonna review that. I may sit in on that. It's a Zoom meeting, I may sit in on that in case they have any questions. Yeah, but I, I think that's what we want to be doing next, correct? Get some kind of contract so we can sign it, have it signed and move forward.
I would agree. Bruce, can you forward me the, the info for the meeting Thursday, for when you get it?
Will do.
I just like, same thing, I'd just like to sit in. I'm not gonna.
Okay.
Alright, so I think we can. If, if everyone is in agreement, we'll, we'll talk to Ziad and. Have him at least start a contract, you know? And uh. Let's get it moving.
You had those extras in, you mean?
But that's a proposal he sent, you know, the, the four tasks to basically get us. You know, some, some, some initial engineering and. Building layouts, you know, you'll, basically we'll get it to the point. Where we'll be ready to have, get an estimate on the project. That we can take to town meeting for approval for a new building. Get us to that point.
We still have to look at a funding source too.
Yes, and, and I would. Expect and, and probably I would assume Ziad would. Just like he's doing with the Forest main, participate and, and help us with the best avenue and. And all that.
Well, that's, that's something that uh, I don't know if we should think about having a joint meeting with the board of selectmen. In the very near future. To discuss. Just that. Because that's the most important thing. Is how do we move forward with the funding, so, you know, we all need to be on the same page, so.
Yeah. Can add that to my list.
Keep you off the streets for a while.
Thanks. That's all I had on my list. I don't know if anyone else in the board had anything. Dennis, Bruce, you guys got anything?
I, I do have one informational thing. I recently sent a letter to um. Mr. and Mrs. Larson at twenty five Rock Street. Their previous bill, water and sewer bill, has been underestimated on the last eight years. Uh, resulting in them getting a bill, a bill will be coming to them for seventy one hundred and change.
Wow.
Something I could throw out to you, Dennis? Is this something after or maybe two, three, four estimates? If is a way we can, similarly, you want to meet a thing, if they don't let you in after two, three times, you can shut them down or. Charge them in some sort of fine or whatever to get these people to wake up so we can do something?
Well, I, I understand where you're trying to go with it and, and, and I agree. I mean, it'd be nice to be able to do that. That, you know, this particular person, according to the records, we left, we did leave a slip every time, you know. Every, out of the eight, eight estimates, we left a slip on somebody that, you know, we have written down when we left and we probably left one at the eighth time. We just, the guy didn't write it down or was reading the meter. That we, we left, that we would like to either, you know, read the meter ourselves, make an appointment. Or, or they could read it and tell us, and they never responded to it.
Right.
You know, they, okay. I would, you know, if it wasn't for the fact of the new meters, you know, I mean, ultimately, the, the, the solution to this is the, the new meter. Um, but when, you know, I, the other thing is that I've, I've asked the, the uh, you know, CDS bills, billing about. The how, what algorithm they use to determine an estimate. Because I would, you know, it seems, I would much rather overestimate and give them money back. Then, and, and then be in this position where somebody's looking at a seven thousand dollar water bill. You know, because we underread. I mean, because they, don't let's face it, if you're handing them money back, they got a smile on their face. Okay, but not, not, not so much the other way. So I think, you know, in the future, it's the, the estimates we need to, first of all, they can't, you know, the, the current, current way they do it is that it is done in some, you know, looking into this. Is that estimates sometimes are based on previous estimates. In other words, you're making, you're making a guess on how much they owe based on a previous guess.
Right.
You know, so they shouldn't, you know, they shouldn't, that, you know, and trying to make an estimate off of another estimate is just, in my mind, foolishness, just. You know, you should, they, they, it should be, you know, based on an actual uh, uh, reading from sometime, you know. And then, you know, and not in this particular case, but in other cases, you know, you have parts where, you know, people change, people die, or they add more people. You know, and, and the estimate isn't going any good.
Well, at some, at some point. At, at some point, we need to go back out there and, and like Ken said. It needs to be sooner time than later, that we need to actually go to the house and request to read the meter. So this doesn't happen. Whether we have to send a guy out at six o'clock at night to do it. And pay the time and a half to do it, that we need to be doing that. Yeah, we need some way to wake the people up so that they let us in or let us read it or to get them to read it and call it in.
Well, I would, I would say that this bill here is gonna be a pretty good wake up.
Well, yeah.
Dennis, when you, when you said that the system or whatever does the estimate. What, what do you? What do you mean by that? We, we don't control that? We don't look at? And again, if it's been estimated that many times, you only have an estimated number to look at, but.
Right.
That, that's not in our control. We don't, we don't say, okay.
Whatever, however it was established in the past, and I can't tell you how it was, you know, how it was, but. It, the, you know, I believe that when the girls, you know, ask for an estimate, the billing system, CDS billing, it figures it out. It does, it does. It's not like they, 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 they add it up on, you know, on a scrap piece of paper and they come up with the estimate themselves. The only time is that that is when somebody, if we know we've got an estimate and somebody's refused to let us in. You know, we've actually chased them down in cases where we chased them down, we might just add another five hundred dollars to their bill just to get them to respond. Sometimes they do, sometimes they pay the five hundred.
We're gonna resurrect the zap fee?
Yeah, I know. That worked great.
Sometimes it did.
Can, can I chime in here for a minute with the billing aspect of it? Um, so. So if, um, if an account needs to be estimated, there's a code in CDS that we put in. And the computer automatically generates that number for us. We don't do anything with it. And like Dennis said, it takes the last four. Uh, readings that are in the computer, so if the last four readings have been estimated, it's estimating again off the last four estimates.
Right.
But at some point, we know that they've, they've been estimated. So after the second estimate or the third estimate. We need to get a real reading. Whether we have to go out there at night to do it and bang on the door or, but we just can't just keep estimating and estimating and estimating.
I, I agree with what you say, Wayne, but you know, if you, you know, we've written, some of these accounts, we've written letters too. And, uh, you know, we, you know, personally visited it, you know, asked the estimate and, and, you know, it's not a good time or whatever. Now, I gotta move boxes, I'll call you back, you know, and, and some people just, it just, you know, we've been, a lot of these accounts, we have been back to. But they're just not, you know, and other than, other than shutting their water off, you know, the only other thing you can do is to, to, you know, is stop using the, the computer estimate. And start using an estimate that you do yourself, you know, and I.
Or, or.
I think.
Impose a penalty.
Exactly, and that, that's where I was going.
Add, add to your feelings. You know, four estimated bills, three thousand dollars. I, I don't know.
I, right, well, the thing is that I think that we should change, we can, and we can talk to Danny at CES billing. And say, we want to change the way the estimates are done. We, and I would say that the estimate, so if you have three actual readings that you're gonna look back. And, and do an estimate on it, I think you use those three actual readings and add twenty five percent to the bill for the first estimate. And we can change that, you know, that, that automatic, that algorithm that it uses to say that, okay? And then the second year, the second reading, if it's another estimate, you add fifty percent to the bill. And you keep going up twenty five percent until they either talk to us or let us in.
Yeah, I, I, I think. The new meters. I, I would assume and, and maybe, maybe, I don't know if you know or Dennis, you know, we can run a report. And, and it can tell us, it can tell us exactly what meters were estimated. And that's a, a report that can be run every time we read meters. And then so you're, you're, you already know, I mean, like I said, now we're, you know, we got the Dead Sea Scrolls. You know, keeping track of meter readings and it's just, you know, the new system will allow us to know. And, and if you stop it at two or three. Well, you're still getting two good readings and two estimated readings, you know, if they, if the, the system's going back four readings, that's two years. Currently, so it, it just, yeah, this, this is a, this is one that you got eight. You know, if, if you get it after two, well, you get two estimates and two reels, so you're still getting somewhat. Real numbers.
None of the new meters are estimated.
Why would they be?
Right, it's always, it's always.
But I mean, if they, then the board needs to come up with a decision of, of, of how many estimates we allow. And then we start with a, some type of penalty to get their attention so that. We can actually read the meter or put a new meter in.
Yeah, I'm with you, Wayne, and I'm, I'm willing to say it's one, one estimate, but then also I think we have to send out something like a, a certified letter.
Exactly.
Then we can trace going forward, because we have to change that policy for sure, that the notification, and we have proof of it. Cause I, they, we, we can't risk any more of these kinds of mistakes, so I fully agree. We gotta change the policy. And, and I'm with, wanna go one, two or three strikes? Even with COVID, yes, we have to come up with an arrangement.
If you do two estimates, that's a year.
Yeah.
Agree.
I know, that's what I'm saying, maybe it's one. It just, it can't happen anymore. We, and we have to overcome. Now, I'm thinking the COVID issue too. We, we have to get, we have, not tonight, but let's put that on the agenda to find a way to work around that.
Yeah, and, and we need to get these meters, get the meters put in, the new meter.
That, that's what I'm saying, yeah. If, if we gotta buy suits for the guys or something, then let's talk about it, but, uh. Anyway, that's another topic, but yes, so I'm agreeing.
I, I, I would say. Add, add a third estimate, you know, so you give them two, if you come to a third estimate. Whether it's a, a penalty, a fee.
Right.
I'll, I'll use the old zap charge.
I think the zap is a bad, that's not good for us. It's not a good look. It's.
No, I know.
I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's the point. We can't.
No, but I, I think it, it goes to your fee structure, that, that can be an added fee. Put it on the list, third estimate, you get a fee and then, and, you know.
That's why, right, it's, it's, so if you, and, and that's why I'm saying though, if you, right off the bat, the very first one you give. For the very first estimate, it should, you know, that a person gives, gets, it gets, it should be based on actual readings. One, three previous actual readings plus twenty-five percent. And then the second one, you know, that way, like I said, we're getting, we're, now we're back into, we're giving them the mon- when we finally do get in. You keep squeezing them like that until we get, finally do get in, and then we'll be handing them the money back. As opposed to, you know, you owe, you owe us seven grand.
Well, I guess this whole thing goes, this whole thing goes away with new meters.
Right.
That, that's what I'm saying.
So maybe, maybe Dennis, maybe that solution of just changing the billing, I don't know what they can or can't do, might just be the short term. You know what I mean, that? You, you know, I, I, this doesn't happen, I don't think, that often. You know, that we get. Four years of estimated.
Yeah, but see, we don't know.
Years, y- y- you know what I mean, yes, I know we have estimated readings, but I think. You, you know, you guys have an idea of what some of the problem ones are, and if it's showing up a few times, we, we try to resolve it, you know.
But in all actuality, how many do we have that have been estimated four or five times?
Probably quite a few.
So we don't know, we don't know what the exact amount is that those people owe.
We have to have, I know, I know, I know this previous billing, there were two hundred, uh, uh, around two hundred accounts estimate.
That's, that's insane.
It's too much, yeah, I'm sorry. Now knowing what we know and been through, we, we.
So out of those two hundred people, out of those two hundred people, we don't know how many owe thousands of dollars.
Right.
Could be all of them.
Nope, that's our show to me, that's.
Think about the estimates, Dennis, that you're having trouble getting in just for estimates or an actual reading. How are you gonna get in the house for the, to change the meter?
Well, if it wasn't for COVID, I'd just shut their wa- I would do the procedure that, you know, let us, let us in and, 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 you know, through the three time notice.
Right.
The three time notice, and, and then I would, when I, then I would shut their water off, okay? And, and, you know, but, you know, we never got that far along with the first, we never got the entire town. You know, uh, uh, one time with the meters, let alone, let alone three.
Right.
You know? Um, be- before it's COVID start, stopped things, you know? So now it's basically, you know, if people request and we can, you know, we can separate, we do them, you know, but it's, you know, you can't, you know. Plus the rules have changed. You can't shut people's water off during the, the COVID thing.
Right.
You know, they've changed the rules as far as that goes, you know, just like you can't kick somebody out if they don't pay their rent.
Right, right.
You know, so, you know, the, the, you know, the only way, I, it's like I said, it's, I, I can think of is that. You know, the estimates should be based on actual usage, not previous estimates, for one thing. And then, and then, uh, and change, and change the way the estimate's done so that it always is more, you know, not less.
Yes.
Like, once you, once you, once you do an estimate, so if you have one out of the three previous readings that's low and you do an estimate. Based on those three previous readings, that can be low, and if you don't try and add something to that to cover your, but, you know, to cover yourself. Then, then the next estimate could be lower than the actual usage, and then it's a year after, you know, then it's just, keeps going.
By the fact that we wind up like every month with people abating or requesting changes to, you know, we got like sixty dollars, sometimes twenty dollars. So anything over, you know, that amount, or let's call it a hundred, in a billing period. It's gonna cause a problem, so we, yes, we kinda, I'm agreeing with your plan. We gotta raise and notify. And then hopefully we get through this COVID thing and maybe shutting off the, the notice.
Yeah, cause the, the system is broken.
Yeah, we can't, we can't go through, we, we can't go through two hundred. Issues of that type of, uh, I'm not blaming you, Dennis, stuck with, uh.
No, it's just the, the factor of the system and being so antiquated. Dennis, a question on that, you say there's two hundred accounts. Is there any ability to get a list of what accounts, and even if you just had that list and compared it to the list from. The previous and you just go down and, hey, this, this house has been, this was on the list again. And maybe, you know, find those ones that might have multiple estimates, or, or do they just?
Yeah, we can find, we can find, yeah, yeah, we can find where, which, which houses have more than, let's say, you know, three or four or nine.
That's a good idea, uh, Kevin, cause let's say it's even people we're familiar with, our constituents. I'm willing to call, I'm willing to call people I know, um, it's tough, you know, people you don't know, that's a different story.
Some people may not even know.
That's what I'm saying, I, I.
They get their bill, they pay it. I mean, we've heard that plenty of times, so I didn't know, nobody told me.
Or they didn't get the little card, they didn't say, it got thrown away, whatever.
Yeah, I did look in, and I did look into that, uh, if it's an estimated bill, it does say so on the bill. This is an estimated bill.
Nobody looks, we know nobody looks at the bill, or I shouldn't say that. Many people need the bills.
I can, I can tell you that most of the estimates that were done in this billing cycle, they've had multiple estimates, it's not just one. I have a pile on my desk of all the estimates and there's a lot of them.
That's, that's where the problem lies, right there. I guarantee you that some of those people owe thousands of dollars and they don't know it.
I motion that we adjourn tonight. Dennis, Dennis.
How, how do we start chipping away at this, and then I guess I'm not, how do we help Amy get through the stack? I- i- is it, you know, Lonnie helping her out? Is it getting someone in there? Couple extra hours a week to help her out, someone that might know the system?
I mean, the.
If you take a dozen, if you take a dozen of those. You know, whatever, fifteen to twenty, a- and, and just get letters out, maybe you get ten that you get an actual estimate, so now we got ten less.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's time and effort.
Right, many of them have had letters. And just, you know, with no response.
Get a list of those that are estimated right now, Dennis. I know you can't fill them this time around, but for next time. Then you got the list and you can, uh, just start hitting them for the, with the surcharge more or less off.
That. We, we would have to put all that into action.
Right.
Vote it and, you know, make sure it's documented before we started it. Uh, I'm not against it. It just, that.
One thing that I really think would make, would have made a difference, you know, kinda late to change it now. But if, but if the, if the algorithm that made the estimates, you know, made sure that they were, they were overestimated. Okay, not underestimated, always leaning to overestimated.
Yes.
We would eventually, you know, we eventually, they would have been squeezed to the point where, you know, that the, their water bill, where they would have called on it. To, 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 to complain about it, at which point we, we could say, well, let us change the meter. And we'll get a real reading and then you, and, and, and give you the ability that you don't have to c- call it into us anymore, we can read it by radio.
Yeah, or if when they go to sell the home, they actually get a credit, that would be appreciated as opposed to, and they add a charge. So I, I, I agree with that. Yes, absolutely.
Exactly, you know, right.
We can also send a crew to the house to talk to the homeowner.
That would, we, you know, if they answer the door, I mean, chances are if they want, you know, cause they know why we're there. They, you know, if they don't an- uh, you know, if they want to answer the door when we're knocking on it to read the meter, they're not gonna, not, or, you know. Not answer it to us to, to, you know, to discuss their meter.
Here's something I run by you, Dennis, and I know what the answer's gonna be, if you know, but. Could it be possible with all those ones you give the estimates on, that some evening or some savvy, that you. Get a police officer to go with them, just, this way, maybe it'll make the people feel safer? Maybe it will give you a little push to be able to get in the door to read things.
I, you know, it, it, I'm sure that, that, that would carry some weight, but I would, I would think that we would at least send a, you know, a registered letter. Before we showed up with a police officer.
Well, not so much to, to threaten them or anything, but just as a, like you said, extra added weight, but, okay, you have a letter present, makes sense.
Right, I'm, yeah, I think, you know, it might add some weight to it, but, uh, but like I said, I think we would at least, you know, do another registered letter. And then like I said, a lot of these accounts have already had multiple letters.
And it's noted on the cards, correct, or on the information?
It's in the notes, it's in the notes somewhere, and whenever there's a letter been sent, you know, or, or an appointment that's been canceled for a meter. That's the other thing, a lot of, they make an appointment, they, they, to, they've made an appointment in the past to have the meter changed. And then they, they, they've, um, called and canceled it, uh, and, and said they'll, you know, call back to reschedule and, and everything.
We have to document those.
I'm gonna make a motion right now. That everyone that has more than two estimates. Receives a registered letter. From the DPW Board of Water, uh, Board of Commissioners. That advises them that they need to get in contact with the DPW. As their water bill may be hundreds plus more than they realize. From all these estimates. But a registered letter has to go out to all of those people that have more than two estimates.
Yeah, to make them aware they got estimates too, yeah.
Yeah, it's not gonna, it. All right, if, if we, yeah, we gotta get extra help or some, uh. Whatever it takes.
Yeah, I, 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 I would agree with everything you guys are saying. I think it comes down to, you know, how can we help? You know, the office get it done, and, uh, for instance now, I think, think about it. You know, Dennis, Bruce, a- and when, you know, maybe it's a, we, we pick a couple. Saturdays and, and, and we knock on a few doors, maybe we get a reading from half of them, some of them. You know what I mean, the people around more. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of, you would have thought with COVID that maybe the numbers would have went down. Is this more or less, or about the same, Amy? Is this kind of normal?
Um, I would say it's around the same. Um, I don't think it's any more than it usually is. It's just, I know the guys, when they leave the slips at the doors, that, that's a great system and all, but I, I think a lot of times those slips blow away. People don't get them and they just don't think to call us with their reading.
Being nice to the lady, I'm sure they take them and throw them away.
That's, they, they could do that too.
You know, you get a young, uh, child that opens the door and says, don't know what it is, goes in the, or whatever.
People, they may not even see him, you know?
Yeah.
Well, the other thing that's happened that I noticed lea- recently was three people called with readings. Two to three days after they had been estimated. Now it's too late, it's already in the billings.
Nah, but at least you got, I mean, I'd say you got something, you know?
Right, well, you got it to compare to the next, next reading, at least you have a reading.
When we, when we send, and, and I'd, I'd like to add to the motion a little bit. Can we ask, I, I know we say contact us, um, I remember my family used to own a house in New Hampshire. And every whatever quarterly, SMS or whatever, they'd get a postcard in the mail. And the postcard was basically a picture of the meter that you could then walk down to your meter with that little postcard. And fill in all the appropriate little numbers, just like it looks like on your meter. Now, I know different meters look different, but. Add that to the letter or put that on the letter, right, y- you know? Yeah, ideally, we want to get it swapped out too, but at a minimum, we need to get the reading. And, and maybe help him, maybe helping him understand the information we need, add that to the letter as well. You know, uh, uh, fill in the boxes, write the numbers in, you know, start right to left or left to right or.
Well, the, those slips that they leave, they have the little boxes on there, so it's, it's the appropriate number of boxes for the reading. So that's similar to what you're talking about, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's include that with this letter. So, you know, it's a letter, a letter notifying that they could owe the town thousands of dollars, which is one. And two, you know, cause people might still be concerned, I'm not gonna let them in my house or, you know, and I, I understand all that. Let's help them get us the info we need and include that visual aid, I'll call it.
Actually, Kevin, I'd like to upgrade that to, you know, in today's technology world, how about we take a photo, I mean, the owners take a photo, send it into town hall. Email, cause, uh, even the card with the boxes could get messed up.
We don't want to send it to town hall.
Yes. Most people, you know, have a smartphone and could, uh, just.
Dave, I'm gonna go one more further. Do we set up an email account?
Ooh.
Watermeterreadings@whitmanma.gov, whatever, I, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna use technology, let's use it.
Yeah, we, we, we have to severely change the, the past, uh, historical actions, let's call it.
We're still going house to house with tablets. And might as well be granted.
We leave, the fact that we're leaving something on the doorknob, actually, I think I took one off my do- my door a couple months ago.
Uh-oh.
Maybe I'm one of them.
Go flood on the kids.
Yeah, I think I am too.
Dennis, could you, could you look into that with Josh?
I'm taking a picture tonight.
And, and, and again, we can put all that in this letter.
Right, I can come, I'm, I can come up with some kind of letter, let you guys take a look at it and, um. And then we can start mailing them to the, um, the, the multiple accounts.
Yeah, and let's include a, a, a visual aid, how to read your meter, take a picture of it and, and then. And set up an email.
I would.
Let's, at least Dennis, it's going into one account, you mean, we all, you know, we could, yeah, send it to this person, send it to that person, but. If you just set up a generic email account. And.
I, uh, I would, I would, uh, you know, start with the, the, you know, fact that we're running across places that have been underestimated. And that just because you underestimate, doesn't, doesn't, uh, mean you don't have, owe the money.
Right.
Well, and, and also in the letter, Dennis, uh, probably at the bottom. We can come and change your meter. Well, and also in the letter, Dennis, probably at the bottom, we can come and change your meter.
Yeah.
So we don't have to go through this anymore.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that's good.
If you buy email, they've got to put their name and address on there if it's not already in there. Send them the reading will do no good.
All right, so we, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So if, um, want to take a vote, the motion to send a letter, certified letter to the accounts, asking for readings and all that. Wait.
Hey.
Dave.
Yes.
Ken.
Can I amend that and just ask how many estimates do they have that they have before you send in the letter? More than two.
I was saying one.
More than two. Currently, if someone has two or more.
Okay, so amend it to more than two.
Yeah. We'll, we'll start with that. I guess any, any progress? I'm, I'm a yes as well, by the way, so. All right. And, and I guess entertain, you know, I don't know what our budget can or can't afford, Dennis, or your budget. If we need to.
We'll probably make it up with one, one address.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
If you look at it that way.
Unfortunately, I mean, I, I guess that's, you know, we can always move money, Dennis, if we had to. You know what I mean? So.
Right.
If there's, you know, some additional.
My goal.
Hours, additional hours or additional person, personnel. You know, that's a good point. We, we get one or two of these paid out. We can, we can move monies, you know? If a budget line item starts, you know, getting, if we don't have enough in a salary.
My goal, my goal with this is that, I mean, who on this board would like to get a $7,000 water bill?
Nobody.
Nobody.
I can't, I can't.
That's insane.
It's hard to face people with that.
So this, this can't continue anymore. We need to get to the bottom of this quickly. This can't linger on like a, like a toothache. We need to get to the bottom of it and get it fixed. Because this can't continue to happen.
Agreed.
If, if we could certainly look at getting the letters out by the next meeting. And then, I guess, Dennis, you can fill us in if that's Google or Amy as well, or what's the best way to do that?
Yeah, we're making.
Paula will be coming in this time around to help out with the billing for the water. I don't keep her out of trouble too.
Yeah.
They're not allowing Paula to come in right now to help out because of COVID.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
That's through, that's through the, um, the Council on Aging that does the volunteers. They, they're not allowing them to come in because of the COVID right now.
That makes sense. Okay, thanks, Amy.
But can she do it remotely?
Maybe.
You know what I mean? If it's just taking lists and typing up letters and, you know, if you got the lists, it's really just putting, have them.
That's true. I, we can look into that for sure. I can call and ask if that's something that she could do.
Right, and, and we can work on that because what works for the, for the Council on Aging may be different than what worked, what can work for us. Having one person come into our building that has a low risk personnel as opposed to people coming in to, you know, the Council on Aging where there's a higher risk of issues related to COVID, you know, it's, it's quite a bit different.
Yeah, it's worth asking.
Yeah, I'd even say if, if, you know, I wouldn't want to put Paula in that position if she's concerned. I know there's only a few in the office, but there's still a few people that come and go. You know, it might be something that could be done remotely. So.
If, if we are moving on, I just have a few things and I will be brief.
Yes, sorry. Forgot sidetracked.
Yeah.
Uh, so I just wanted to mention that tomorrow we're taking delivery of the Peterbilt cabin chassis. That's only going to be here for a short period, not even the whole day. And then it's going right over to Kerry Trucking to have the, our body, uh, put on it and the plow and everything outfitted. So that'd be nice to have that new truck in, it's beautiful truck. Um, moving on from that, uh, the town survived our big windstorm last week. Uh, the guys did a great job. We had several streets blocked by downed trees. Um, they did a great job, uh, clearing the streets neatly, safely. Nobody was hurt, no, uh, you know, nothing got damaged. So, um, that was a good night. I, I know Dennis's guys were running around all night long, uh, with generators. They did a great job keeping the sewer stations up and running. Um, the one issue that came up again, and it comes up every time you lose power, is 18 and 14 is prone to power outage, specifically more than 18 and 27. And every time that happens, even though it's a state-controlled intersection, Whitman DPW is asked to put out traffic control devices, meaning barrels with stop signs on at all four corners of that intersection with no lights there whatsoever, illuminating the intersection. It's really crazy and it's, it's very dangerous. We ended up putting a light tower up in the corner of Wendy's parking lot and shining it out into that intersection and left it on all night long, just to hopefully let people see what's going on there. And we still had the stop barrels out there. But I reached out to the state, they couldn't provide us with any additional equipment. And, uh, so I had a conversation with Chris Serra, uh, who's the lead engineer for the DOD project up there. And he was going to ask about the possibility if those control panels could be rigged up to a, uh, generator, even if it was our generator. So if we were out, we were going to be without power for many hours, we'd go in there, you know, possibly pull up a switch and switch over the generated power and just run those traffic control lights. Super dangerous. He didn't know if it was a possibility, but he was going to get back to me on it. And that was just late last week, so I haven't heard anything back, but.
My own question there.
Yeah, it's not a town, it's not a town-run intersection, it's a state highway-run intersection. But, you know, response I got from the emergency dispatcher in the middle of that storm was, quote, "We can't be catering to towns that do not have power at their intersection." So we, we were on our own.
Bruce, who owns the lights? Do we own them or does the state own them, as far as, or who maintains them? Us or the state?
Hundred percent state-controlled intersection, I mean, they, if any lights get knocked down, they do the maintenance on the lights. Anything happens to lights, we call state D O two. Uh, so, you know.
I got to ask, I don't know if, we, I want to ask, I don't know if we initiated it or them. Uh, I believe there's a battery backup option too, from an intersection I did. It's not as good. I mean, they definitely, you know, shorter lifespan than a generator if we, if we could get that. But, um, can you ask him about that as well? Like, that's a, I, I'm 99% sure it is an option that maybe can actually fit in the cabinet that they put out there. And, uh, you know, let's say it runs 24 hours anyway, just as a short term, the generator, you know? I'd love to, but we, we can't even get them for our sewer plants, pump stations, so I don't know.
Right.
I, I agree, it's all important. I agree, it's critical, I, you know? It's, it's not safe. Um, and I've been through there, it's been dark, so.
There were, there were vehicles specifically moving north and south on Route 18 that weren't, weren't even tapping their brakes as they went through going 40 to 50 miles an hour. And where, where other vehicles on, going east and west on 14, we're assuming that they were stopping also. So it was, it was the wild west. So, yeah, I will inquire about battery backup.
And even if the battery, maybe it could just go to flash on a battery.
Right.
You know, so, you know, use a little even, you know, maybe use less power, you have the power, less devices. But at least you have the visual.
Yeah, either all red or.
Right, red one way and yellow the other. At least you have a visual.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's insane. I.
It was really bad up there. I wa, I was up there. It was kind of scary. Yeah, it was. The next day in the daylight, it was still scary trying to get in through the intersection.
Yeah, power didn't go on until around, I believe, 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, yeah.
Okay, that, that was all I had.
Oh, okay.
All right. Anybody else? All right.
Over a lot of ground. Motion?
We, we did. Someone wants to, someone wants to make a motion.
Oh, it's no turn.
Want to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll talk to you.